Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for December 11th, 2024. Look around and see that we do have a quorum with the vacancy that's going to be filled here tonight. I'm going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our invocation is going to be delivered by Judge Keough, Montgomery County. You all join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is for us to be here tonight, to participate in an environment that you have created for us that is a government by the people and for the people, that is designed to guarantee that we have certain rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that this group, this council, and this city swears to and guarantees that they will give to the people of Shenandoah. And Father, we just, and protect those rights, and we thank you for that, Lord. We thank you for this wonderful season that we're in tonight. We thank you for the Christmas season and what it means to all of us, and certainly the birth of Christ, but more importantly, as it extends even on into the death, burial, and resurrection of the Lord Jesus, and we thank you for that, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity for salvation. We just pray that you would bless this time tonight, especially have the opportunity to do a swearing in here, Lord, and we pray this all now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, and you may be seated. All right. We're going to vary from our agenda. We're going to move item number six before item number five, and that's going to be the swearing in of our new council member. Judge Keough, please.
Thank you. As I have the opportunity to swear individuals in, oh, by the way, your former mayor, I'm going to swear in on January 1st. Very excited about this. So you'll be seeing Rich again and serving as our precinct constable or commissioner for Precinct 3.
The city is very excited about that, Judge.
Yes, yes, we're very excited about having him come. He's such a good guy. He understands local government. Thank you for training him. And also, my automobile companies that I worked with before being in this business did business with his finance and insurance purveying company that was, he was a partner in. I did not know him personally, but when I heard that he was going to do this, I thought, man, we have experience in local government and someone who can read a financial statement. So that is awesome, and he's going to do a great job. But it is an honor, and as Ron brought up, I had, he said, man, you have a monopoly on this deal, man. You've been doing this since 2016. And I, you know, I just, I thank you all for that. Truthfully.
Thank you.
I remember walking the streets here and knocking on doors when I first ran for the Texas House of Representatives, and have a love for the community and love for the people, and it's been awesome. So when you give me the honor of coming here and swearing in somebody, your city council, I take it very serious. I really do. But as we do that, if you'll indulge me for a moment, I want to talk a little bit about what it is about swearing in, if I can, because many times, and I've seen it and have done it even myself, I see somebody gets sworn in, and everybody just moves on, and nobody says a word about what it means, and it's just like just business as usual. But the fact of the matter is, is that when we think about swearing in, there is a constitutional authority where we are required to do this. In the articles, the first articles in the Bill of Rights for the State of Texas, the first one says, "Texas is a free and independent state, subject only to the Constitution of the United States, and the maintenance of our free institutions and the perpetuity of the Union depend upon the preservation of the right of local self-government unimpaired to all the states." There's a lot to unpack there, and I'm not going to try, but there's some things we need to know as we're swearing in. Frank, I most recently had the opportunity to do this with you, and I appreciate that very much, because in the U.S. Constitution, it is a requirement for the president, for the Supreme Court, for Congress, the legislative, judicial, and executive branches to swear an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. And that's in Article 2 of our Constitution. Article 6, though, it also requires that all federal and state officials, including judges, state legislators, magistrates, they're all required to take an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution. Why would they do that? The reason is, is because there is a unique connection between the umbrella of the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Texas. And here's what that is. In the Tenth Amendment of our Constitution, it says, "The powers not given to the federal government are reserved for the states of the people." So that although there is the umbrella of the U.S. Constitution, we have the state constitution, which comes underneath that Constitution, which then is able to establish local governments according to how we, as the people, see fit that are not addressed in the U.S. Constitution. But there is a connection, and when you think of some specific examples, I think this is important to understand. In our abilities, your abilities as a council, you have the ability to annex, assuming the other side votes to be annexed, now that I signed on that bill, by the way, and to be able to do that, but you know, it says in the annexation that you just can't go take property. And you can do it as a city, but the U.S. Constitution says, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." You're not going to steal somebody's community according to the U.S. Constitution. That's where the U.S. oversees the Texas Constitution and the local subdivision in the city. When it comes to permits, local governments typically source of their permits for activities, parades, demonstrations, and whatnot, the issuance of these permits may also have constitutional connections arising out of First Amendment issues. Well, you can't have that religious activity here. We're not going to give you a permit. Wait a second. First Amendment says, I have a right to free speech. That protects both religious speech and political speech. When it comes to taxation, it's the same issue, and other rights as well. So when you think about defending the Constitution of the United States, and you think about defending the Constitution of the State of Texas, that is right here, right now. And as city council members, you don't have to worry about what anybody thinks. You don't work for anybody but the people. All you have to do is good. For this is the will of God, that by doing good, you would put to silence the ignorance of foolish men. So says the Scriptures. So with that in mind, and now that we have a fair assessment of what it means to take the oath, I'm going to ask Joe Summerlin, Jr. Joe, why don't you come on up here, and if you would participate with me in this, and if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe M. Summerlin, Jr.
I, Joe M. Summerlin, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of City Council, Position 2.
The duties of the office of City Council, Position 2.
Of the city of Shenandoah of the State of Texas.
The city of Shenandoah of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Joe, congratulations, councilman. So glad I was able to do this. How about a round of applause?
Now, surely, you're going to have to get a picture of this. There's someone who will take a picture here. You're here, Amanda. A treasurer. I'm so proud of you.
And thank you all. It's been always an honor. I'd love to stay and participate, but my bride, Kim, so my bride, Kim, stand up, Kim, everybody see who you are, and we're going to take off. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
We're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. Do we have anyone? No one, no one has signed up. All right. We're going to move on to item number seven, Presentation of the Monthly Capital Project Report.
All right. MDD did not have a meeting in November. Our next scheduled meeting is going to be in February of 2025. Current year projects, we've completed the main court resurfacing project, so that project is complete, and there was an update on the eastbound Research Forest at Grogan's Mill Merge Lane. The target date for that has now been updated from fourth quarter of '24 to first quarter of '25. Longer-term projects, the Vision Park Roundabout is 100% completed, and as well as the Vision Park Deepen and the Veterans Point amenity. Other updates, the redevelopment Storm Sewer, we're working with property owners to obtain additional easements. David Memorial and Tamna Intersection, we're communicating with the telecom regarding relocation of wires for a new pole. The monument signs are still on hold, and that's going to stay that way for a while. Intersection at I-45 Improvements, Tech Dot will bid and manage that construction. Tech Dot is scoping the work, and I've been waiting for an update from their meeting from September, so the target date is still to be determined. The wastewater treatment plant updates, they completed the installation of an eight-inch waste activated sludge pipe and return, and another RAS pipe as well. Upcoming work is installation of air lines and air valves at the chlorine contact basin and hydrostatic test at the new digester. Updates for the Tamna ARPA project, we're still on target for our second quarter of 2026. Water plant update is, Sequera Civil Construction has mobilized their crew to start working on the ground storage tank, ring wall foundation, and the water meter subcontractor Weisenger continues the underreaming of the well. The ground storage tank, Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors continues to work on submittals with Biol Engineering. Thanks, John. And they submitted their construction schedule, and they'll be mobilizing in March of '25. Those are the major updates for the report.
Thank you, Councilman Raymaker. Any questions?
You have a good report.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to item number eight, Presentation of the Annual Pool Report.
Here in council, I'll take this. Unfortunately, Susan was not feeling well and had to go home early, otherwise she'd be presenting this probably some better stories, but I'll give you a few of the highlights as I read through it that I found interesting, and I hope they can do as well. So one of the highlights is, or a reminder, is July, some of the numbers were affected for Hurricane Farrell. We had it close for between July 8th and 16th, just to be on the breeze, had to balance out again before we could swim back into it. Also, with our kiosk that we have at the site and the ease of our civic rec system, we sold 273 day passes this year. Those are $10 a pass. So those are for anyone that wants to come and use the pool, they can pay $10 and swim at the pool. So that's a significant increase compared to many years in the past, and I think it's just the online system and the ease of customers being able to get to that. And there was one more update I was going to tell you about. Where was that? Oh, here it is. So some interesting percentages here this year. So residents make up the largest percentage of visitors at 79%. Their guests are another 15%, and then non-residents are at 6%. So the overwhelming majority are pool, the visitors are residents and their guests, but we do have some non-residents that purchase memberships.
Money wells back.
Oh, yeah. That water's always crystal clear. I mean, Susan does a great job before Woody did a great job. It's a beautiful pool.
I know we talked about updating the pool fees, so I was wondering when that is going to make it to the agenda.
I can, let me look at that. There were some modifications made, but I can get back with you on that. I'm making note of it.
Because when I looked at it and I saw that 19% are guests, that seems like it's kind of a high number of guests in comparison to 6% of non-residents, so I'm not sure if we're not missing something there.
Yeah, we did. You know, I did get with Chris because he can get in on the backend and tried to limit some, there are limitations with civic rec. It's actually not specifically designed for this. It works, but it leaves some openings that some people are taking advantage of and listing 20-plus members of their household. So we tried to implement some changes to help reduce the amount of fraud.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Before we go any further, I want to recognize Ms. Kate Funkhauser, who's sitting in for Bill Farabee, who is away on some family matters.
Thank you for having me today.
Welcome. All right. We're going to move on to item number nine, Discussion on Possible Action to Approve the Lease of Two Police Vehicles.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table this item, seconded by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman We will deal with this on another day, future date.
I did want to have some discussion about it, though.
Okay.
Okay. As I looked over the data that I had, we have, as far as I can tell from the spreadsheets in the website, we've got 32 vehicles and 26 officers. One of the reasons I wanted to do the tabling is, we don't have any contrasting data against possible new vehicle purchases to make an informed decision. I also found that leases are not recommended if you have available cash. We have plenty of available cash. If we don't, somebody should tell me. Most of the leases are done to free up cash, but we don't have this problem, so why would we be doing this? Also, the data that we have on our vehicles, it's apocryphal. We only have two years available, and it should be stored from the service date to present. The service intervals are not recording either mileage or engine hours, and there's no way to do a year-over-year comparison. We don't have operator metrics. We don't have fuel consumption data. We don't have vehicle utilization metrics, no routine reports, so we have no idea how you're actually using and actioning the data. Probably the biggest concern I have, though, is D&amp;M leasing. They're in direct competition with us for a limited number of vehicles available to cities. It's the equivalent of hedge funds and corporations buying single-family houses. It's manipulating an already tight market and inflating prices. It's not transparent, as the financial costs are not clearly disclosed. And I think we need to work with our state rep and senator on legislation to severely limit leasing companies from monopolizing access to these critical vehicles, as they have deeper pockets than many cities, and they don't have to wait for funding approvals. So that was the reason why I wanted to table this.
Okay.
I have my own reasons of tabling it. I noticed on the bid that there was, and I've talked to chief about that, and he's talked with them, that there was $1,100 of floor plan fees, which are to pay the dealership that had the vehicle the interest, which is backwards to me. We don't pay, they build that into the vehicles when they order it. And then there was a courtesy delivery fee of $600. So there's $1,700 capitalized on the lease, and even when it was adjusted, the one for Jake for the mileage corrected that, it still, I questioned that, and that was a very strong turnout. Doesn't really reflect D&amp;M leasing, but I was disappointed in that being in there. And leasing, I don't think we still understand it. They have got it off, we don't have the right quotes either. So I think tabling it is proper.
Yeah, I didn't see the sell.
I do want to make a comment that the police chief did reach out to DMs, and they were going to waive that $1,000 or $1,100 for charge. We got that information yesterday, but that was going to be waived, it will be waived, just to let you know.
And I did want to say, I had a good conversation with Lisa about how we're going to get better data in the future, so I was really happy with that.
Lisa, had we not talked about this a couple of years ago, to where, Mike?
No. So we did bring it to...
That suggested that we prepay, we buy them out of line and have orders in for Tahos in advance, and have the funds available to purchase them?
Yes. So we are, you know, we have the option to do a letter of intent for any distributor. The problem is, we don't know when they're going to open those bid dates, correct? Especially the Tahos. Tahos are very limited, and they're very desired at this point, so that is, it's always going to be kind of a challenge. So that, we have the availability, it's just you don't know when it's going to happen.
But if we pre-approve it, which I thought we did last time, whenever there is an opening to buy a Tahoe, which is the preferred vehicle by everyone, that we have the ability to snap, go right then and get it?
Yes, we made that decision.
Do we have that ability now?
Yeah, we made that decision during the budget workshop.
Okay. So when these positions, are we still looking for Tahos like that? And if an opening comes like that, are we going to jump on them and buy them instead of leasing?
So you did approve in the budget this year for three Tahos to be purchased. One was a K-9 unit. These vehicles that are being talked about are the chief and the lieutenant's position, so they are not patrol vehicles per se, they are police package vehicles, but they don't have all the outfit costs that you would have in a normal patrol vehicle. So these are, this was just really a pilot program that we wanted to explore for some of the administration vehicles, and then possibly extend it to like Public Works, Community Development, vehicles that have lower runtime, lower mileage typically, because then you have a residual value at the end of your lease that you can invest back into a vehicle. That's why we wanted to pilot this program. There are still some questions, you know, as you've heard, we're going to go back, we're going to go figure out some more data, we'll bring it back, but this is just strictly a pilot for just the lieutenant and the chief, because what they're driving right now are old decommissioned patrol vehicles. Well, Troy's vehicle, his engine exploded, so it's gone. It was a 2017 Tahoe. The transmission on that vehicle was replaced. Jake's car, Lieutenant Reivers' car, is a 2015 Chevy Tahoe, decommissioned patrol car, and that had, we already replaced the engine in that once, and it started to encounter some problems. So we're trying to find a solution that didn't tie up a whole lot of cash investment upfront. It was more amortized over a lease agreement, and we could savage some revenue back.
But we still have the option now that if we have an opening to buy a Tahoe, we can go like that and get it?
Yes, we have the funding. We're good.
And we could take one of our current patrol vehicles and move it down to Jake and the chief. That would be an option, right?
I'll let him answer. I don't know how their flow with...
So that's what we're doing right now. I was asked to keep these vehicles longer. I have. I've done what I've been asked to do. However, the issue comes, by the time the vehicles have got to myself and Jake, they've gone beyond their useful wear. That's the reason why we're having engines being replaced and stuff like that, which, you know, the vehicle that I was driving, the vehicle is worth $8,000, and you have an engine that's going to cost $11,000. So there's no residual value there left on that vehicle. As far as the maintenance and repairs and the data, I was not personally asked about the data, so I do have some of the data that you were specifically speaking about, but I was not specifically asked about the data.
Let me ask this question. You said that this is a pilot program. Is that a pilot program for us, this department? Has this been explored with other departments?
Yes, they have, I can't remember the exact number, but they do, most of City of Houston's Police Department, they just signed on City of Humble's Police Department, and I can't remember any other cities, but Troy...
About the county, is the county...
There's multiple agencies that use it. Conroe uses it, they use it for their admin vehicles. This is a program that I've spoke to many agencies that are going to it, and the reason why they're going to it is they feel that it has been a cost savings for them as far as maintenance. It keeps their vehicles fresh, and so they don't have the vehicles breaking down like we do.
We're lucky, we're fortunate to have someone who can provide some data, some information on this. Amanda, would you mind?
Just in case you do not know me, I'm Amanda Carter, Budget Officer for Montgomery County. We did actually ourselves look at potentially leasing vehicles for our LEO, our law enforcement officers. We did not find that it, for us, it worked. We did not get DLM to bid on ours. Ours was done through Enterprise. Our county attorney's office didn't really like the terms and the conditions, and that really killed the dough for us. We were looking at it as part of the patrol, because, and if you guys may not have known, about four years ago, we switched most of our constables' agencies from, they had their own vehicles to county-owned vehicles, and so we were buying, you know, about 54 at a time. And so, yeah, we looked at potentially leasing it, and for us, it just didn't, the money, the money didn't really work out 100% in our favor. Part of that is because they were really trying to get us to do a vehicle maintenance package with that, which we weren't really interested in doing. But along with the fact that, you know, we do buy, you know, like, the finance director, I believe, was probably, it is hard to get Tahos right now. Thankfully for us, we did open the bid right before the Tahoe Bank did, so we were able to purchase a bunch of vehicles, but again, that's not always the same that you guys do. But for us, leasing vehicles was not really a good opportunity for us, and we didn't, we're not considering it in the future.
Now, to echo Mrs. Carter, Ms. Carter, we went with Enterprise a few years ago, and we also found that same issue. This is a buy-war contract, so it didn't require a bid, and because we have less than, you know, it's only two vehicles compared to your 54, but so that's why when they met with this company, it was more advantageous for us to explore it.
All right. Thank you.
I do know, the judge's office did look at DLM, not for law enforcement vehicles, but for just regular vehicles, and again, our county attorney's office didn't sign off on the terms and conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa, I think, hearing what I just heard from yourself and chief, I think, and I'd like to even start a committee or have the city administrator look at how we depreciate these vehicles, because they are depreciating asset. We seem to be depreciating them faster than normal, the fact that they're patrol vehicles. And if we declared them surplus and moved out of them at a faster pace, we would work ourselves out of this problem, or the chief...
I would love to do that, but I was asked to hold the vehicles longer, and because of that, that's the reason why we're having this issue.
I'd like to look at it.
We've already been meeting internally about that metric, with the overview kind of database that we can create, that will have all that built into there.
Yeah, yeah, part of the problem that I had with the data, again, I got it from Lisa, who got it from Kara, from PD. It was two years worth of data, so a lot of the information is missing and incomplete, and so we need to have better data to be able... And so we need to have better data to be able to make a good assessment. But in looking at the data that I had for the two years, if you would have told me that our 2015s for the last two years were only averaging $1,300 of repair costs, I would have said, we're doing fantastic. And pretty much, the data that I had also was skewed by accident data. And we get repaid by the insurance company, so that's not really valid in the comparison as well. So just because there was an accident, doesn't mean that, you know, we paid that cost out, that that's something that our insurer is going to pick up for us. So I was really impressed with the data that we had. I don't know how you're doing the, you know, the utilization. It looks pretty good in general, most of the vehicles are in the range of 4,000 to maybe 11,000 miles per year, so they're not getting a ton of miles on them. So I think that we've done good to keep them and keep them rolling as long as possible. If we get to the point where a vehicle needs a new tranny and/or a new engine and it's more than the book value of the car that you're going to be maintaining, I'd say just sell it as it, just don't even bother to fix it, just sell it as is.
Just to echoing your point, the mileage is one factor, but we also have to look at the engine hours. So we'll get all that data as well to show the engine hours, because those patrol vehicles don't shut off the whole shift, they're running.
Okay. So if we utilize Conroe's, what they go by, which in the past, what we went by was 80,000 miles in three years, that's how we rotated patrol cars out. Conroe goes by 80,000, 80,000 miles, five years, or 50% of the maintenance repairs of the vehicle, which is half the cost of what the vehicle is. So if you meet two of those three criteria, then the vehicle would be removed from the fleet. If we went by that criteria, we would have nine vehicles currently removed from our fleet.
I guess Conroe's got more money than we do, huh?
All right, we can, since there's a motion to table this item, let's do more research and bring this back as, once it's been analyzed and poured through. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And that is to table this item?
To table.
Motion to table this item. Okay, you have the ayes, any nays? All right, motion carries to table. And number 10, discussion regarding updating names on Veterans Point Monument. This is a discussion item only.
At the last regular meeting, Councilmember Robinson suggested to put this on the agenda and it was seconded, I can't remember who seconded it. So it's back before council. I know that he, at that meeting, you know, suggested that, you know, perhaps we have a small event on Veterans Day to add names, but he wanted to have an open discussion with council and staff and so here it is for discussion.
Thank you. Mayor, I'll just jump right in if that's all right.
Sure, go ahead.
The thought behind this was for us to have an opportunity to talk about the future of this wonderful amenity that we brought into our park. And decide on how in fact we are going to manage this year after year after year. Most municipalities, counties across the country that have veterans parks or memorial parks has some programming that they do on an annualized basis. Every Veterans Day, they have a ceremony, a celebration if you will. They recognize those who've given their lives in service to our country. And I'm sure that the people who were excited about putting this park together and the veterans who participated in that, I just feel certain that they would like us to continue and do that in a fashion that's worthy of their time and effort and service to our country. So let's recognize them annually is one of the things. So I put together some thoughts about maybe some programming that I'd just like to throw out, because the idea here is that we establish a written policy. Typically, these things would be done in the form of a resolution. The council would do a few wherethes and then we would have now therefore. And that's, and we give our staff some clear guidance on what we want this park to represent, how we want this park to be managed, how we would like to see them move forward in the years to come. So with that said, the park, if I recall, we had some significant input initially from veterans to help us in selection, design, and they reviewed some of this. And so one of the thoughts is that perhaps we might want to consider having a specific committee, a veterans committee, whose responsibility will be to plan a special event each year for Veterans Point. Now, while we were out there during the dedication, a number of people came up to me and some of the others, I believe, I know they came up to me and asked, how do I get my loved one on there? And it was winging it at that point by saying, well, you can go to our website and there's an application process. And it became clear to me as I was looking that over myself that we're really limiting right now, it appears, the names that could go on that wall, to you either live in Shenandoah city limits, you're a resident of Shenandoah, or it reads as though your family member has to either live in Shenandoah or in the ETJ. And I'm not sure if that's what the intent really is. So I was hoping that we could have that clarified, a little bit better wording. If it's not, it seems to me that a number of people that would ask me about it weren't really talking about a family member that lived in Shenandoah or even lived in the ETJ. They are residents of Shenandoah, but they have a family member they would like to recognize. Seems like maybe we should consider making it more clear if that's what our intent is and allow that to happen as well. Here's what it says on the website. Veterans Point at Vision Park is a tribute to all who have served in the United States Armed Forces with special recognition of veterans from Shenandoah and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. This memorial honors the courage, sacrifice, and dedication of men and women who have defended our nation's freedoms. So unpack that for just a moment. You see where I'm going here? It reads as though it's very limited. And quite frankly, unless you're in government or have been around it, you may not necessarily even understand what ETJ is or extraterritorial jurisdiction. But aside from that, it appears that we're limiting it. So that if I have a family member, and I do, you have a family member, I know you do, Mayor, and some of you probably do, that you live and you're a resident of Shenandoah, but you might want to honor them. Well, it doesn't appear that we can, it really seems to prohibit that. It goes on to say, the address of the park and that it's a serene place for reflection, remembrance, and gratitude, whether you're honoring a loved one, reflecting on stories of service, or seeking a moment of quiet appreciation. Veterans Point is a meaningful destination for all. It really is. The turnout that we had for that dedication, I think, overwhelmed everybody. Not in the sense that we couldn't handle it, but there were more people showed up that day than we had anticipated, and we had to break out more chairs. Then it goes on to say, submit a veteran's information. If you or a loved one is a veteran who has lived or currently lives in Shenandoah or the ETJ, we invite you to submit the information. Again, it goes back to, it really is limiting. So right now, it seems like if you have a loved one who has never lived in Shenandoah, they don't qualify. I'm not sure if that's what we really intended. I'm not sure we ever really decided one way or another. And finally, it goes on to encourage those to explore the stories and the experiences of Shenandoah veterans through their own words and experiences. And there's a place to check, to click on here to be able to do that. So what it tells me is, one, we might want to be more clear on what the qualifications would be, number one. Number two, we need to actively update that website, make sure that as those applications come in and are approved and we eventually put those names on the wall, that we want to have a website that reflects the accuracy of that. Also, maybe we could engage the CVB, our Convention and Visitors Bureau, to schedule the Traveling Vietnam Memorial. You know, it's a miniaturized memorial, the size of it may work. People travel from all over the states that they're located in to see this, which means that they're going to stay in our hotels and they're going to actively frequent our restaurants and perhaps our shopping as well. So I think what I'd like to encourage the council to consider is deciding clearly what we want to do in the way of qualifications to be on the wall. Give authority to the city administrator as to the timing for adding new names to the wall, whether it's each year or twice a year, whatever the city administrator feels is appropriate. Also encouraging the city administrator, and do this through perhaps in the future a budgeting process, but promoting the addition of those names, getting that word out, doing what we can to advertise that this is a program that we want you to participate in if you have a, if you're a veteran or you have a loved one that is a veteran. And again, consider this veterans committee as an appointed committee, a standing committee perhaps. Mayor, you and the council, we would appoint some folks to, and their vision and mission would be to plan an event each year. And I can envision us having a ceremony out there each year where veterans volunteer and they take a certain number of names and they read those names out loud to the audience that are on that wall. So that, those are my thoughts, I want to share that with you.
Oh, very good point.
Yes, and thank you, Councilman, for those points. Very well said. I do want to add a few points, because I think it'll help clarify and then I'll turn the discussion back over to council. So the intent was indeed actually to narrow it to the Shenandoah city limits and ETJ. And Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was part of the discussion with the veterans committee as this was being designed, was to really hone in and focus it on Shenandoah.
I talked with Colin Aldrich and John Huston, and that's exactly, both of them were on the committee.
Yes.
That was exactly their feelings.
Yeah, they wanted to hone it in and part of that was to honor, you know, Shenandoah, we're the diamond in South Montgomery County.
We're the pearl in the oyster.
That's right. That's right, I got it used in New Orleans, pearl in the oyster. But also some of that focus on Shenandoah was because of the funding source through the CVB, we were trying to collect artifacts and those stories so that we could justify the use of those CVB funds. And your suggestion for the veterans walk was talked about as well, to get on the websites. And I know John Mayner's been doing a lot of investigating into that and has gotten some headway into getting on those sites, because you're right, people do tour the country and visit these sites. And that was a lot of the argument for the CVB being able to fund this veterans park. So hopefully that's some helpful information.
In honor of his changes, I think we need to go back to the veterans and let them decide.
The idea of.
Bring it up to them.
The idea of the committee is a very good one. I think that we should and we will establish that. For the purpose of coordinating, you know, the celebration of Veterans Day, Memorial Day, anything having to do with veterans on a yearly basis, I think that's an excellent idea. Again, I'd like to echo what Mr. Perch said about the actual funding of the Monument Vision Park. We were kind of limiting that aspect of it because in order to justify the budget of it. But yes, any additional comments?
Yeah, I do. Veterans Day is already a city holiday, so I'm wondering what the impact would be on staff and how we will work around that.
As far as?
Well, usually we can't do any of this stuff without staff. The last one, they had to set up all the mics and the sound system and.
Well, the committee would, that would be delegated to.
I'm just bringing it up, because it's a city holiday and we'll have to take account of that.
And these are items that we'll discuss during the planning.
Budget overtime or putting it up closer to.
Or the committee may be able to muster up enough volunteers through the veterans forum wars and such to be able to actually put on the entire program without staff having to be involved.
And we are on the list to, I had discussion with the chairwoman of the Montgomery County Veterans Committee, Ms. Woods, I believe is the name. And she is willing to put us on that veterans trail that exists. It's, yeah, so we would be part of the veterans trail in Montgomery County. That's going to happen, we'll be getting a call from her soon.
All right, the only other thing that I wanted to add then was like, talk about the frequency. And I was thinking, once a year? Kirby, you ordered the plaques, right? Who ordered plaques? Roal, you ordered plaques?
Yeah, it was a combination between Joseph and myself.
Okay, I was just, I just wanted to be sure that you had enough time. So I was thinking 60 to 90 days, you have to have the list and a cutoff list to make your deadline.
Right, about 45, 60 days will be the problem.
There are some logistics involved that you have to, you have to deal with in order to get the names on the wall. The main thing being that it's, you'd have to take the entire wall off to add new names to it. So we would have to limit how the frequency of when that's going to be done.
Right.
But that's going to be part of the discussion in the future with the committee.
When we're building another wall.
Yes, that's right. All right, any additional comments?
Mayor, if I could, just to Councilman Ray Maker's point. When we look at the holidays, there is also the option of swapping Veterans Day for another holiday, because it is going to take staff time, even if with the committee involved, volunteers, you know, some are still going to have to let them in the building, get the AV equipment. You know, there's still going to be staff time, so that may be worth discussing.
Y'all can meet one you want in your other holiday then, so for those. I know some folks then, if the school is out, they've got daycare issues.
Right.
All right. All right, thank you for the lively discussion. We're going to move on to item number 11. We're going to, this is table, isn't it?
No, this is still, we can still discuss, now possible action on this item.
Discussion on possible action to approve engineering amendment number two for the Terminal West Water and Sanitary Utilities Project.
Yes, Mayor and council, what you have before you is amendment from BIL engineering. And this is amending the additional services during construction. So this is added because it's during design and we're able to kind of wrap our minds around this entire project and realized we were going to need to hire a plumber to connect everything from the city line to every single home. Well, there were not any coordination, there wasn't any sort of construction administration from BIL engineering on that portion. So this amendment adds that coverage so that we can keep an eye on the plumbers, make sure that they're doing the correct job. So that's what this amendment is. There's also a couple of deductions from underruns that we've already seen, like the surveying credit, which are also included in this. And so what you end up with, sorry, let me go to my agenda report here, is it's the subtotal, so we're looking at an increase of $108,414, that's what the amendment is.
Okay, motion to approve the amendment for $108,000.
Second?
Okay, Jim got it.
We have a motion to approve this item as read by Councilman Ray Maker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? And the fees are not to the recipients of the water line, correct?
No, this is for, yeah, for BIL engineering's construction administrator, he's going to be on site.
John wants to get paid.
Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 13. Item 13, item 12, I'm sorry. Resolution submitting nominees as candidates for the election of the Montgomery County Central Appraisal District Board of Director.
I would like to nominate Mr. Ron Raymaker again.
And I respectfully decline. If I'm allowed to speak. I'm removing my name from consideration as it's been up for nomination nine years in a row. And it's rather in a protest that so many of the votes are allocated to the school board who controls the most votes while spending the most tax dollars. Probably knowing my reputation, I don't have much of an opportunity for making any kind of meaningful reform there because they won't allow anybody who wants to be a reformer to be on that board. So I would nominate Frank Robinson.
Is that a compliment?
I don't know.
They might like you better, Frank, you know?
I'm thinking I should decline that. You know, the hazing hasn't already started yet, but maybe we should put Joe on there.
It's open to anybody, there's no second on you yet, so.
Well. Yeah, my vote should fail for a length of seconds.
Now, the form-
I will second Frank.
What did I do to you guys?
You're so well-known in Montgomery County.
You know, it's not going to make any difference.
Either you're going to go down in flames like me or you're going to get on the board.
Now, the resolution has five spaces, is that the-
Why don't we all-
That's not prophesying anything, it's just there.
Every council member here, I put their name in one of those spaces.
Not me. You can nominate multiple.
Nominate more?
You can, you don't have to.
Or you can nominate no one.
Yeah, you can nominate nobody.
Okay, Mr. Pollard, you're on the list.
I thought we had a second on Frank.
I decline.
I would like to go ahead and renominate Ron Raymaker.
And since he said I would do it, I'll second that.
Okay, there you go. You got a second on that one?
Well, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to put the names down here and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution as I write. I'm not going to ask for votes from you all because you're obviously going to back out and it'll make me foolish.
I've done my time.
All right. All right, can I get a motion, can I get a motion on this item? I approve the resolution.
I approve it.
What's on the resolution?
You don't, you don't, the names.
Oh, okay.
This is just submitting candidates.
Just say so.
I still decline.
Just for the record, I'm not offering. I'm submitting the names. All right.
We're being voluntold.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Councilman Pollard, seconded.
Right, second.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one, the motion carries. Item 13, a resolution of the City of Shenandoah, Texas authorizing the expenditures of approximately $740,136.64 or more of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to fund water and sewer infrastructure projects pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion on that?
Have we discussed all of the new things that you can apply ARPA funds to?
We haven't in this.
Because there's a treasurer's report that I've looked up. I mean, you could even buy police cars, but, you know what I mean? That's what brought my attention to it. I just didn't know if we considered it, that's all my question is.
We haven't discussed that item.
Yeah, the final rule from the Treasury Department that was proven 2023 did expand the use of funds, I believe, to some road projects.
Stormwater projects.
I love it in front of me, I apologize.
Stormwater projects is also-
Stormwater projects and some information technology programs and projects, but I'm not totally sure on the police department. The reason for this agenda is the redundancy sewer line has been postponed on our CIP that was brought to during the budget workshop. So by the final rule from the Treasury Department, we have to re-obligate those funds by December 31st or I have to write a check back to the Treasury's Department.
Well, I don't want to do that, I just wanted to know if we looked at every scenario.
Council was pretty adamant at that time to, let's go with water sewer projects, so that's what we just kept exploring. There are some additional projects that could be done with that, the Tamina Utilities Project that we are in an interlocal agreement with the county. So we just thought that would be the most ethical and transparent way to assign those funds since that project's already going on.
Right. And we were facing a potential issue there in the funding. Is that right? But the county has come through.
Trying to fill a funding gap.
Yes, I want to reintroduce Amanda Carter. She's actually the budget officer for Montgomery County.
I'm liking her tonight.
She's in her office and you want to explain what happened yesterday, Commissioner Squirt?
Yes, yesterday, kind of like you guys are doing today, we kind of wanted to do a trip up on our ARPA expenditures and we had some money left over and so we met with Bioengineering a couple of weeks ago and they gave us an update that we gave to Commissioner Squirt. And we realized that we were going to be potentially short with the interlocal agreement with you guys and so our goal was to find $1.1 million to at least hit the, what we know for sure you guys are going to do through contracts. What we did not include as part of our, using our ARPA funds was the contingency piece of the project. And we just did not feel like it was, we didn't want to tie up basically ARPA funds on a contingency. And so if that comes to be where we do need the contingency, that's something that we'll work through, through our local budget. But yes, yesterday we did allocate an additional $1.1 million of our ARPA funds to assist, and we will have an interlocal agreement following next Commissioner's Court to update that agreement with the updated numbers from you guys, for you guys. That'll hit our Commissioner's Court next week so that hopefully you guys will sign that agreement, knowing that we're good partners and that we want the project to succeed. I mean, it had a five zero vote, there was no opposition and definitely everybody wants the project to continue and make sure that it happens.
Thank you very much.
It's great.
Thank you. And so this would be to supplement those expenses, is that right?
Yes. Yes, I was redesignating these for the Tamina Utilities improvements.
Can we make it clear that these funds will not be used for anything other than the Tamina project?
Once you pass this resolution, I can't. So I have to report annually to the Treasury Department and they're going to keep me to the expenditure allocations.
Well, by law, we have to use it on this stuff.
Charlie said we could go buy police cars, now I don't want to go buy police cars for this money.
We have a, so-
Didn't suggest that, correct.
So I would, I think the appropriate use of these ARPA funds, because they are not taxpayer funds, they were a federal government grant, that you would want to use these more for a project like this than to tap into our own water and sewer funds if we don't have to, just because these are funds that were not paid in by former, current users, but they are government grants.
All right. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, Lisa, if I could, could I get a burn down of what we've spent already on ARPA?
So yes, so we had received $741,000 approximately. We did the utilities extension project that connected, Joseph, correct me if I'm wrong, but are utilities down to the railroad tracks, correct, around there?
Close enough, yeah. The water, yes, the sewer couldn't quite make it because of elevation.
And then we did approve that project in March 2022 for that redundancy sewer line. We spent a little bit of engineering and design, but ultimately we've delayed that project on the CIP, so.
Dang, you're good, I didn't expect a burn down off the cuff.
Oh, I'm good. I love these numbers.
It's been recently dealt with, that's why.
It's fresh.
Thanks, Lisa.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas providing for the appointment to fill positions of place two and place four on the Shenandoah Planning and Zoning Commission.
If you look under your agenda packet, you'll see that Stephen Saye and Mark Kendon are both willing and eligible to serve. And so that is the recommendation, keep them in their places.
Motion to approve said people to these positions.
Second, those guys are doing awesome.
We have a motion to approve the two positions, to reappoint for the two positions by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item 15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas opposing the proposed widening of Grogan's Mill Road and requesting its removal from the Houston-Galveston Area Council's Transportation Improvement Plan.
Mayor and council, your call at the last council meeting during Citizens Forum, we had several guests who asked council to consider this and council wanted to place it on the agenda, so it is here for discussion. And possible action.
You have a motion?
A move that we accept that motion, present it.
The resolution?
The resolution, okay.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Summerlin. Any discussion?
Yeah, I don't really have a dog in this fight, but other than when it gets to Grogan's Mill and we have the turn lanes, it definitely does need to be wider there. The bay, when you're heading north, is too short, it's causing, you know, backlog of cars, so that part does need to go forward. It's not part of the HGAC plan because this is like all or nothing, but I just wanted to add that. I don't, you know, I only need the parts that help out Grogan's Mill. At research.
Yeah, this is the issue that the residents of that section of Grogan's Mill are concerned with and eventually the impact that, as for our part, the impact that that expansion would have on our end of Grogan's Mill. We have a lot of traffic issues now, I just can't imagine.
I know, I mean, they're working on the turn lane to go north from off of research and they're going to expand that bay to handle that.
Yep. All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have four, four to one, the motion carries.
Who declined?
Councilman Raymaker. Item 16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas designating the city secretary as a records management officer.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution by Councilman Raymaker. You have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Robinson. Any discussion?
I'm just glad she doesn't ask us for another $100,000.
Congratulations on accepting that additional burden to your busy day.
You've always been doing it, now I just haven't taken it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas designating the authorized check signers for the City of Shenandoah banking accounts with Stellar Bank, Techpool, Techstar, and Logic, and authorizing all other necessary signatures to validate banking resolutions with Stellar Bank, Techstar, Logic, and Techpool.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to approve by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, discussion, a resolution of the, excuse me, discussion on possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution of the City of Shenandoah, Texas designating official city holidays.
Just a couple of things here. Having this before you as a resolution is new this year. In the past, it's always just been an agenda item. Typically, it's recognizing the same holidays and so staff was trying to be a little more efficient and if we have this adopted by resolution, then that would just perpetuate year to year unless there was a change and that could, would then be brought before council to discuss.
So immediately we have a conflict.
Right, and that's the second thing, Veterans Day.
Yes.
And this kind of goes back to our previous conversation of if we're having an event on Veterans Day, then it would probably be worthwhile to look at removing that from the list and supplementing it with another holiday.
I'm going to say motion to table this until you guys can determine what you want to do with the holidays and how we're going to work that out.
You read my mind, thank you.
I think I agree with that. A second too. We're going to table this item for further discussion in the future. Item 19, discussion on possible action to adopt the minutes of the September 11, 2024, September 25, 2024, and the October 23, 2024 regular meetings.
Motion may be approved as read.
Second.
We have a motion to be approved as read by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, on item 18, we had an item on the floor, but there's no vote.
There was a motion to table and a second, but no vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Who, what was the action?
To table.
Motion to table, I'm sorry, I passed that up. By Councilman Raymaker, seconded by-
Jim Pollard.
By Councilman Pollard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for catching that. Keeping me out of jail.
They scare you with those videos. Joe will find out.
Item number 20, discussion on possible action to ratify the accounts payable for November 2024.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker. You have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Summerlin.
Did you say that name?
I know. Any discussion?
Yes. On, under Technology Function 55, what is Tyler Tech, $45,940? In code Public Safety RMS Suite, year four of five?
So a couple of years ago, the police department had moved their RMS system to Tyler Technologies who we use for our ERP system as well. And that contract is amortized over five years. So it's just the year four payment for that includes the ticket reader, stuff like that as well.
Okay, that's all I had on it.
All right, there's no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 21, city administrator updates.
Just have one update tonight and that is a video from our Veterans Point Dedictory Event. Now, I will ask council, it's five minutes long, would you like to watch the entire video or should we watch a minute and then you can watch for us on your own time? It is on the city website for anyone to view. What's your temperature tonight?
I've seen it.
We have an audience here that may not have seen it, there's any-
Go ahead and run it.
Let's play the whole thing.
Let's play the whole thing.
Thank you.
Today we come together not only to commemorate this new memorial, but more importantly, to pay tribute to the men and women- pay tribute to the men and women who have served our country, and to honor the sacrifices they and their families have made in defense of our freedoms. Veterans Point stands as a lasting symbol of our collective gratitude, a place where we can pause and reflect on their immense courage. That is what defines the American spirit. What makes this memorial especially meaningful is that it honors not just veterans from across the country, but our very own Shenandoah residents. The names on this wall behind me represent members of our community, some who have called Shenandoah their home for decades, and others who moved here after their time in service, such as myself. I got to Texas as quickly as I could.
We honor all of our veterans who unselfishly placed their lives on the line for our freedom. Those men and women were ordinary people until they heard the call of duty and answered it. They left their families, their homes, and their lives, not for recognition or fame. They fought to protect our country, to maintain our way of life.
Those names listed on that wall have served an astounding 425 cumulative years in defense of our country. Just think about that. 425 years of dedication, of strength, and sacrifice, all for our freedoms. Let's not ever forget that. It's often said that freedom is not free. And those words ring true here today. The freedoms that we enjoy every day, the ability to gather, the ability to worship, to speak openly, to pursue our dreams, and live our lives in peace, was paid for by the sacrifices of these fellow Shenandoah parents, and millions more like them. Their bravery has shaped not only our nation's history, but the future of generations to come. We owe them a great debt that can never be fully repaid. This memorial also serves as a place of reflection for the families and loved ones. Those who stood by as their sons, daughters, husbands, wives, and parents answered the call to serve. They too have sacrificed, and this place stands as a recognition of their support in the face of uncertainty. To the families of our veterans, we thank you for the role you've played in supporting these brave men and women. For without you, our service would not have been possible. As we stand here today, we dedicate Veterans Point not just as a monument of stone and metal, but as a living testament to the enduring spirit of service that flows through Shenandoah. It is our hope that this will be a place where families bring their children, where veterans come to reflect, and where future generations can learn about the sacrifices made on their behalf. Veterans Point at Vision Park will serve as a constant reminder that the price of
I just want to say that it was an honor for me to participate in the dedication of this really important landmark here in Shenandoah. And I appreciate all those veterans who are here, and who are at home watching this, and those who are no longer here, that we haven't meant our prayers, and we're very grateful for that. Thank you for showing that.
Absolutely.
We don't have an executive session scheduled for today, so we're going to adjourn this.
Counsel inquiry.
I'm sorry?
Counsel inquiry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're ready to go.
Come. There you go, yes.
Are you done with your updates?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I didn't mean to pick on the chief. All departments were equally unorganized on their data for their fleet vehicles. And so the idea is to have uniformity across them all, and that's what Lisa's going to be helping us achieve. Of note here, for the holidays, I guess we're going to need to add the agenda item for the holidays in there, as the City Secretary points out to me, that we won't be able to have New Year's Day off if we don't approve it. So that'll be on our next meeting agenda, than the special meeting I believe that's coming up.
That's correct.
Other than that, then, I just wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and thanks for what you've been doing this year.
Councilman Summerlin?
I'm just honored to be in this position, and thank you for your confidence in me. Every person that I've met so far that runs a department, the leadership of the departments I've met are stellar. And what a pleasure it is to meet you and to watch you serve this city in the capacity that you do. My family and I thank you, and we look forward to a great, a great year in service to our citizens, and thank you for the opportunity. And not to forget Merry Christmas.
Great to have you, Joe.
To go along with what Joe says, he, I've been exposed to him for the last month since he's been nominated for this, this position, and I've been overwhelmed by his thorough commitment to our community. You are such a blessing to this city, and such a blessing to this council. You truly have a servant's heart and a servant's mindset to take us to another level that we've, I think we've strived to achieve before, but I think we truly will achieve it with your addition to this council. You're incredible. You bring so much to this city, you and your entire family. The Summerlin family is critical to the, not critical, is a great addition to this community, and we truly appreciate all of your family. I know you'll all be very involved, even more involved in the city than you have been in the past, and you've been very before. I wanted to go in, dive into a little bit of the detail into, we have a total report that is given to us for this council. The police report, I noted the numbers, I wanted to point out especially a couple of things. Number one, the Police Department, about three months ago, made a commitment to really go after the speeders in traffic, the sign rollers, and to step up a focus inside the city on managing that, enforcing it. And I'm looking at the numbers from August to September, residential traffic enforcement has gone up, went up from 65 to 75, traffic arrests, or not arrests, but incidents that we've pulled people over and talked to, that's just in the city. In October, it was a 56% increase, we had 117 incidents. I know that I have seen a lot of the police officers patrolling and stopping people that are violating, making violations. I think that helps our city become even more safe, and we're probably the safest city in America, at least on this part of America. And thanks to our incredible Police Department and the leadership of our incredible Police Chief. I'd also like to point out another report, and that is from the Convention Visitors Bureau, some stunning numbers that I think that people need to understand. We kind of take it for granted, but our CVB promotes our city all the time. We're constantly out there with the name Shenandoah all over the nation, all over the state, all over the area, all over the city. We judge our performance as a city, as a CVB, on how we, how we grow over prior year in occupancy, hotel occupancy, and also, we measure how our growth compares to our competitive set, which is Conroe, The Woodlands, places like that. Basically, our demand for hotel occupancy in September, which are the latest numbers that we have, was up 25.5% over, year over year. Incredible growth. Our occupancy tax is up 20.1% over prior year. We are growing much faster than anybody else, I mean, they're not even close. The other thing is the hard work that John and Billy do for us has resulted in a social media audience growth year over year of 107%. That's 2.8,000 audience compared to, over last year, growth over last year, over 100% growth. On website sessions, on our website, we are 100.3% over, over last year, 8.2,000. That's great numbers. Most people are not doing that, it's because of the hard work that our CVB does. It's helping our hotels, when it helps our hotels, it brings money and visitors into our community, it brings visitors that are spending dollars for our retail stores and with our hotels, which is dollars in our pocket. And when dollars come into our pocket, what it does is lower our taxes as residents, because 75 or 76% of the tax revenue that we have in this community in Shenandoah comes from the businesses. So the homeowners are really, as they grow, our tax burden decreases. And it's because of efforts like this, promotional efforts like this, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows how good these people are, and what they're doing for you to lower your taxes. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Well said. Councilman Brad?
I'd like to wish all of staff and the diocese here and the administration of Shenandoah joyous and a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I appreciate every one of you and everything that you do, and I just want you to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Robinson?
Thank you. This is the season. We are in the season. So I'd like to read from Isaiah 9, verse 6. "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace." I want to thank God for keeping that promise, and I want to wish all of you, all of you, a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. I'd like to echo everything that's been said here today. We're going to have a short special session next week, but which probably, we won't have the audience that we had today because of the special occasion that we had. But I also want to wish everyone a Merry, Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year to all. Again, we don't have an executive session scheduled. It is 7:25, we're going to adjourn this meeting of the City Council.